I'd like to call to order this Independent School District 624. Before I ask the clerk to read the roll, it's good to see so many smiling faces that I've only seen over the screen for the last year. So, I really appreciate everybody coming out to say hello and, you know, I know that warm weather is upon us. So, with that, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Arcand?
Here.
Bloyd? Absent.
Chapman?
Here.
Ellison here. Mullen?
Aye, here.
Newmaster?
Here.
Thompson absent.
All right. See, I forgot how it works. If you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Feels good to be back in the common room, the community room. With that, we will now move, we have an agenda before us. Would ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Ellison. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster. All in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The ayes have it and we have an agenda before us. We also have before us a consent agenda. These are sundry items that we take on every month. One of the things that I am always thankful for is the generosity, the continued generosity of our community and this month is no different. So, I would like to thank everyone that have made donations to the district. They're very important for the programs that help build our schools and help grow our schools is what I should say. Thank you. With that, I would ask for a motion for, to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Chapman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Arcand. This will require a roll call vote, so I would ask the clerk to please read the roll.
Arcand?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
And the motion passes and we have a consent agenda. It is now time in our board meeting for public forum. We ask that anybody that wishes to address the school board, fill out a white slip, I believe they're on the table over there, that you, the public forum will be open for up to 30 minutes. We'll allow every speaker to have three minutes and no more than 10 minutes per topic. So, I have two slips today. Would ask, and if I apologize if I mispronounce your name, is it Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
To come up and be able to address the board?
Sure.
Please come up to the podium. And if you, as you come up, if you can tell us your name, we would appreciate it for the record.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Hello?
Hello?
Got it. Okay. Good evening. My name is Maria Farrell and I am speaking on behalf of a community group called Hugo Diversity Strong. HDS is a group who resides in Hugo that is within the White Bear Lake School District. I myself am a White Bear Lake alumni with two daughters who are graduates and a son in high school right now. Thank you for allowing us this time to address the board regarding the recent parent opposition to the privilege and oppression advisory lesson at Sunrise Middle School. It has been disheartening to see the negative feedback this activity has generated on social media considering that as a school-wide advisory lesson, the complaint only came against a teacher of color. Additionally, the public has not only seen, has only seen a single screenshot out of context and not the entire lesson. Hugo Diversity Strong does not stand alone with our frustrations regarding the lack of response from district leadership to parent opposition for this activity. Historically, our schools have been known to teach inaccurate facts that these sensitive, about these sensitive topics and have spread a very Eurocentric narrative that excludes important truths about the treatment of minority groups of all kinds. It is disappointing that as our teachers and staff courageously move forward with the equity work in our classrooms, parents are fighting to have it silenced. For too long, we have been complacent in teaching lessons that highlight dominant white culture and do not speak to the lived experiences of historically marginalized populations. White Bear Lake area schools leadership owes it to their students and the BIPOC, LGBTQ+ Muslim immigrant and female communities to stand by this lesson. Choosing to ignore or suppress this lesson is oppression and only further demonstrates the deep-seated white privilege that exists in our schools. It is completely unacceptable that the district leadership has continued to remain quiet on these issues. It is not enough to engage in the work behind closed doors, throw an equity statement on your website, then turn your back on it when it's time to implement it. You cannot say you support your marginalized students and their families and then not take an active stance when their lived experiences are being silenced. What are you showing your students and families of those oppressed shown in the lesson when you're remaining silent? You're showing them that White Bear schools are complicit in perpetuating systems of racial oppression. The recent indignation shown by a select group of parents in our community in response to this activity only further indicates the urgency of this work. Again, this time publicly, Hugo Diversity Strong is calling on Dr. Kaz Mirzek, the board, the communication department, the equity and engagement department to show public support for Principal Pierre and the teachers at Sunrise Middle School. Someone needs to say or do something. Stand by the White Bear Lake area schools equity commitment and stand up to the families who are showing opposition to the equity and diversity education in our schools. HDS wishes to see reassurances made to White Bear Lake area schools stakeholders that the district will continue to prioritize the equity work being done and the staff and students, with the staff and students. HDS also asks that the district will continue to strive to promote inclusivity, tolerance, and acceptance in all of our schools. Additionally, it is imperative that district leadership makes a statement assuring that their commitment to equitable schools has not wavered and diversity education will continue in White Bear Lake area schools.
Thank you. So, what I'll ask, I'll ask Dr. Kazmirzek to follow up with you to answer any questions and to talk through that process. All right? Thank you very much.
Yep. Thank you.
And then next, I have a white card for, is it Ms. Cornstock? Comstock? I apologize.
I am actually on the opposing side of the curriculum that was posted at Sunrise Middle School. So, that photo of curriculum has surfaced and circulated amongst the community and I am concerned on the opposing side of that. Some of you may be familiar with how that content was proposed and it categorized children and people in oppressors and privileged. So, based on the content of their race, their gender, their religion, their sexual preference, and citizenship, it then categorized us as privileged or oppressed. I want to understand, is this the kind of content we can continue to expect as part of the Equity Action Plan? Who approved that curriculum? And was there dialogue or discussion with parents in advance of that material being presented? I'd like to understand more about what that material was because yes, it was just a screenshot. So, I'd like to know, you know, a little bit more about that content. It's unclear what it was intended to accomplish. Certainly, it's demeaning to the, some of the students that were categorized as privileged. Do you think a white child who is a Christian in a wheelchair considers themselves privileged or is in a lower-income family? I don't understand why we need to treat others and put them in a box. We have the bear rules that teach respect. We need to teach our children to respect everybody, no matter their race, their sex, their citizenship. Respect and treat others how you want to be treated. It also goes against and is in direct violation of School Board Policy 522, Student Sex Nondiscrimination. And it also is in direct conflict with Policy 609, Religion. So, we need to think about what that content of that curriculum is teaching our children because it certainly is demeaning to those that were considered privileged. So, I just don't believe that we need to categorize and put our children in boxes. We need to focus on their education and preparing them for what life is going to be like following graduation. I would look to the board to address that curriculum, explain the transparency of the equity commitment efforts and what future curriculum is going to include. I would also like to understand how parents like myself can get involved. I think we need to be able to treat everybody with inclusive mindset and make sure that we are teaching our children equity and respecting all students, not categorizing them based on their sex, their religion, and anything that was in that content. Thank you.
Thank you. I will also ask Dr. Kazmirzek to follow up with you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the board? Okay. Thank you all very much. We will now move into our first informational item, C1, which is the student recognition. Dr. Kazmirzek.
All right, Ms. Betty. Go ahead and hand it up with this first committee. Okay. I am excited to bring our student recognition ceremonies back to you. Of course, they look a little bit different than they did have in years past, but we're excited about the change and this will actually allow us to share the information and the celebration out more broadly than we've done in the past. And so, rather than having the students here shaking hands and picking up certificates and pins, they'll get those at the school level. But we do have some students who did receive state-level recognition in the Scholastic Art Awards Celebration and so we've created a video that I'll show here, a two-minute video. And then again, we'll be able to share that out in different ways as well. So, please watch this, enjoy the students' artwork, which is incredible, as you will see. And when you see the students, of course, say congratulations to them and know that they'll be getting the certificate and the bear pin on your behalf as well. So, we'll do a little bit of magic here. Thank you, Dr. K. And we'll be good to go. And so, you probably noticed the different grades that were...
Sorry.
Not sure what's happening. Sorry. You probably saw the, there we go, the grades that were representative. This group is representative of middle school and high school students in our district. So, congratulations, students. And then we will, so that's that. We, I suppose if we can applaud for them, we certainly can. And then we'll move on to Dr. K.'s report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Betty. We will now move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Kazmirzek.
All right. Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. All right. I want to take a quick moment to congratulate the students we recognized tonight for Scholastic Art Awards Honors. Participation in this year's statewide contest was unique and required more initiative than ever on the part of the students. So, it was great to be able to honor a number of middle school and high school students. Well done and thank you, staff and family members who supported the students along the way. The following celebrations are being recognized in March. National Nutrition Month, Music in Our Schools Month, and Women's History Month. Read Across America Day is March 2nd. March 5th, Employee Appreciation Day. And then National School Breakfast Week is next week along with spring break. As February's Black History Month activities came to a close this weekend, the district's Black Excellence Club shared a Black History Month showcase that featured students performing poetry and song. A link to the virtual showcase was included in last Friday's weekly video and in last night's community newsletter. Thank you, students, for pulling together a terrific showcase. We are eager to welcome our class of 2034 incoming kindergartners. As students are officially enrolled, they receive a welcome packet from their school complete with an "I'm a Bear" T-shirt. Find enrollment paperwork and additional information at www.isd624.org/kindergarten. Community members are invited to mark their calendars to join me for an informal chat over a cup of coffee from 4:30 to 5:30 on April 6th. Find details on the district's online calendar the week prior to the event. And Jennifer, I think we'll move, I don't know that Jennifer has, she's not here tonight. She's joined from afar, but I don't, I think I'm going to move on. Jennifer, text me or email me if you have a report. Otherwise, I'm going to roll right into my next segment. COVID-19 update. So, our elementary students have been learning in person since January 19th. That was grades K through 2 and February 1 for grades 3 through 5. And our elementary distance learning academy is going strong. Our middle school and high school students have been learning in hybrid 2.0 since last week and our K through 12-plus students will be offered the opportunity to switch to in-person learning starting March 22nd. Distance learning has been and will continue to be available for our secondary students even as we switch to in-person learning. March 18th and 19th will be transition days and school will not be in session on those days for middle school and high school students. School will remain in session for K through 5 students on these secondary transition days. Principals will continue to be in contact with our middle school and high school families with additional information. We are excited to begin hosting school board meetings in person again at district center with social distancing measures in place. And finally, with spring break approaching, we want to share important information regarding travel. Currently, the Minnesota Department of Health says out-of-state travel is highly discouraged. White Bear Lake area schools recommends that families follow the MDH guidance regarding out-of-state travel, which can be found on the MDH website. If you travel, it is important that you protect yourself and your family and that you prioritize COVID-19 testing. Local testing sites are available and families can order a COVID-19 test in advance for use after travel through the Vault Health website. Links to the resources I've just mentioned are available in district messages recently sent to all families. Be safe, bears. And that's it. Chair Mullen.
Thank you, Dr. Kazmirzek. Are there any questions or any comments regarding Dr. Kazmirzek's report? Hearing or seeing none, we will now move on to our first discussion item, which is the D1, the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Statement of Concurrent. Dr. Davis, is this yours? Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
All right. That sounds good. Good evening to the school board, Superintendent Kazmirzek, my cabinet peers, fellow district educators, families, students, and all in virtual TV land. Prior to the ascension into our time together, it is absolutely critical that we observe the original peoples of the land that we meet on tonight. Minnesota is the home to 11 reservations for Dakota in the southern region of Minnesota and seven Ojibwe reservations in the northern Minnesota. And I have recently been taught about a 12th being the Ho-Chunk Nation. This land acknowledgement recognizes the resilience, resistance towards colonization and attempts of separating native peoples from Minnesota lands. This public acknowledgement honors the native communities with the much larger project of decolonization and reconciliation. Recently, I had a discussion with the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, also known as the AIPAC, about the concept of seven generations. We briefly discussed how our work during the meeting could impact seven generations of White Bear Lake area school students. My briefly, let me briefly elaborate on the concept of seven generations. I have a quote from Orin Lyons, faithkeeper of the Onan Daga Nation. He said it the following. "The peacemaker taught us about the seven generations." He said, "When you sit and counsel for the welfare of the people, you must not think of yourself or of your family, not even of your generation." He said, "Make your decisions on behalf of the seven generations coming so that they may enjoy what you have today." In working with the AIPAC, we in partnership with the White Bear Lake area schools, in relationship with the district strategic plan and the district's American Indian Education Plan, have been building, planning, implementing, and evaluating and assessing educational experiences for American Indian students today and several generations from today. Our concurrent decision is another building block in creating a sustainable educational experience for American Indian students seven generations from today. With this stated, I would like to bring forth two major leaders in our American Indian Education Program, Chair of the AIPAC, Andrew Adams III, and our program coordinator, Jordan Ziegerman.
Thank you very much.
Next slide, please. And as guided by everything that we do in our district is our equity commitment and our questions that guide our work. And I will turn it over to Ms. Ziegerman.
Thanks, Dr. Davis.
You're welcome.
Bonjour, Chair Mullen, members of the board. Dr. K, thank you so much for having us here tonight. I am super excited that our annual vote in this presentation is happening on the first in-person school board meeting of the year. I'm very excited about that. And today, I'm just going to keep it brief and hand it over to the Chair of the AIPAC. Really, I wanted to talk to you all, if you could go to the next slide, please, about our AIPAC and what that, how that came to be. So, our American Indian Education Program is about five years old. So, we're still a baby program, but our committee is so strong. And due to Minnesota State statute, every school district who has more than 10 American Indian students enrolled within the school district has to form an American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. Our committee meets on a monthly basis and we have been meeting virtually throughout the school year so far. We are consisting of 11 parents and then we also have six active staff members who are involved in the process as well. We intentionally meet every month to make sure that our committee, as well as the school district, is doing everything we can to meet the needs, the unique needs, of our American Indian students across the entire school district, which has been a challenge, but something that has been nice this year is at the beginning of the year, through the Indian Education Program Plan, we were asked to provide a three-part plan. So, what does our plan look like when we're fully distanced? What does it look like when we're hybrid? And what does it look like when we're fully in person? Although it took a lot of time and creation and effort on behalf of the AIPAC to put that plan in place, I'm very proud of what we've come up with and I think it's really a big part of the AIPAC's decision of the vote of concurrents and non-concurrents. So, this is just kind of some of our marketing. If we can move forward a little bit. And we also like to, we like to bring life to the presentations and showing our faces. Little bit more. So, this is kind of a list of who is involved on our AIPAC and you can also find this information on our landing site on the district webpage. So, if you go under Programs to Indian Education, you'll be able to find all of this information as well as all of the activities and contact information for our program staff. Just more pictures, bringing our program to life, obviously, some of these activities took place prior to COVID-19, but we've been finding really creative ways to ensure that we're implementing program, programming and continuing on with our cultural enrichment classes regardless of the situation at hand. So, again, this just talks about the Minnesota State statute highlighting the purpose of the AIPAC and at which point that we were required to have one. So, at this point, I am going to welcome Chair Adams. He is a rock star to our program and we are so thankful to have him here today to talk about the vote of concurrents. Thank you.
Thank you.
As Dr. Davis and Jordan mentioned, my name is Andrew Adams. I'm the Chair of the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. And under Wisconsin, I'm sorry, under Minnesota law, because of the funding that the district receives for, that's specifically allocated towards the education of American Indian and Alaskan Native students, you have to seek input from the parents concerning whether we are essentially in agreement that the district is providing adequate educational curriculum opportunities for American Indian students and that you are providing academic excellence, but that you're also providing what I would call a safe educational environment for those students. And sitting in the audience this evening and hearing those two ladies speak about those screenshots that were on social media or wherever they were at, I remember seeing them on some Facebook page and I would be remiss to say that, in my mind, a safe environment for educational pursuits does not mean that students don't become uncomfortable. I think in a lot of aspects, you, to further an education, sometimes you have to think outside the box and sometimes you have to think with empathy and with critical thinking skills that sometimes make you feel uncomfortable. I know that when I am invited to speak at, as like a federal Indian law lecturer at a law school or an undergrad class, especially in Wisconsin or Minnesota, I make a point of letting the students know, especially in Minnesota, that, you know, Minnesota became a territory in, I believe, 1848 or 1849. And the coincidence of that, though, is that there were treaties that were signed between the indigenous people that were here that predated Minnesota as a concept that allowed for the land that you're sitting on right now to be classified as a territory under United States law. And then there were subsequent treaties that were signed after that where these Indian people are being invaded, their homeland is being invaded, they're being killed, and they're being asked to give up land that their ancestors were buried in. And so, in 1858, the state of Minnesota has entered into the Union, I believe, as the 32nd or the 33rd state of the United States, but that wasn't enough. There were subsequent treaties that were signed after that and then there was the Dakota War of 1862 where you have, the only time in American history where you've got Congress unilaterally terminating title... Congress unilaterally terminating title that these indigenous people had and reservations that were set aside for them by treaties. And so to echo Dr. Davis's point concerning land acknowledgements and history, sometimes that history is uncomfortable. Sometimes it can be painful for different constituents that you have within your community, but that doesn't mean that you don't acknowledge it. And I would encourage the district to further its steps for equity, inclusion, and positive educational opportunities, not only for your American Indian and Alaskan Native students, but for all of your students, because that is how communities are developed and how people learn the history of the land that they sit upon. So with that, the A-PAC voted at our, at our committee level to, for the concurrence, and it's my honor to communicate that to the board this evening and to ask you all to essentially ratify that concurrence so that we can then transfer it forward to the Minnesota Department of Education. And I'm, you know, available or open for any questions that any of you may have.
So I know that this is an action item for us as we move down the agenda. Is there any questions regarding or comments that any board members would like to make regarding the discussion? I know that this is an item that comes up every year, and we've done it, this is, we've done it for several years, so. Okay. Chair Adams, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate seeing it, we'll see it on the agenda. We will now move to our next agenda item, the 2022-2023 school year calendar. Dr. Gillespie.
Chair Mullen, members of the board, I have our 22, 2022-23 calendar, and essentially it looks very similar to previous calendars with one change that we're really excited about. I worked with a committee of educators, early childhood through 12 administrators, and our community education professionals, and looked at how do we support the big transition years of students entering 6th grade and 9th grade? And what we have decided and would like to do is have the first day of school be a soft start, is what we would call it. And so in middle school and high school, solely 6th graders would be in school the first day of what we would traditionally think of as the Tuesday of school, same with 9th graders, and then all other students would start on that Wednesday with our 1st through 5th graders. This will allow us to do some web activities and link activities in a more concentrated way, and really make sure that those transition days are positive for students and all of our staff to wrap around them on those key days. So that is the sole major difference between this calendar and other calendars. I do have a committee working on looking at parent-teacher conferences still, so next fall, I'll bring those dates to you. And then we do have one more professional development day for elementary to place, but we would do that after we land on the conference dates. Otherwise, this is a nearly complete calendar.
Okay. Is there questions regarding the calendar that's in the packet? I know it's, this also will become an action item later on, but I just want to make sure if there's any questions or concerns. Ms. Ellison.
I just want to say I really like that change. I think that that makes a lot of sense, to allow our 6th graders and 9th graders to get the feel of the place before all the other kids come in. I think that's, that's really great. And I also like that we are continuing to have no school on Election Day, and it looks like it's been built into the end of the quarter. So that, I'm glad to see that continues. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Gillespie. We now move to our next discussion item, D3, which is the proposed fiscal year 2021-2022 budget adjustment. Mr. Wal.
Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board, Dr. Kazmercek. At our February 22nd work session, we spent some time talking through the guiding principles around the budget adjustments for fiscal year 23. Remember, at that time, we talked about pandemic-related enrollment impacting so many school districts across the state, and White Bear is no exception to that. And when your revenues are impacted, so must your expenditures be. And so we're working, we've been working over the last several weeks to make, identify appropriate adjustments as we move forward with our fiscal '22 budget. We talked about those guiding principles, and we'll spend just a minute reviewing those. Our highest priority will be to minimize the impact on the classroom. So wherever possible, we would identify budget adjustments that would be as far away from the classroom as possible, as far away from the student experience. We'll remain committed to our equity commitment, identifying and recognizing where we can, the unintended consequence of our decisions, especially on those historically marginalized students within our system. Adjustments will be sustainable. One-time adjustments don't help us in this process. They help us adjust our fund balance, but not necessarily in getting our revenues and expenditures in line. Staff across the district, oh, excuse me, attrition will factor into the reduction of expenditures, so we know that we have staff retire, and especially when we have teachers retire, where the gap between the first-year teacher and a retiring teacher is significant, where we can replace with hires at the low end of the, of the schedule. Staff across the district are encouraged to share ideas of how to decrease spending and increase revenue, and we attended each staff meeting and invited our staff to share with us what you see, what ideas do you have that can not only help us get our expenditures in line, but also ideas that might help the district attract more students and increase revenue through that method. And finally, Budget Adjustment Committee made up of district and building administrators will review proposals and make adjustment recommendations. That committee met on February 22nd, reviewed a host of suggestions that came not only from our cabinet and district leadership, but also from staff in our buildings. Casted all those out and then put together what we think is the most responsible plan moving forward. Cabinet reviewed that on February 23rd and moved those recommendations forward to the Executive Finance Committee, which included Chair Mullen and Ms. Ballloy on February 24th. And so what we're bringing to you today are those adjustments that cleared through that So let's, let's get after it. Again, this is, we had a number of ideas, some that, as we cost them out, were very helpful, and others that just weren't quite, we weren't quite able to put into place. But when you're, when you have a gap between your revenues and expenditures, it makes sense to look at both. And so our first step was to look at our revenues, to identify, are there ways that we can increase revenues to the district to lessen the amount of adjustments that we need to make? And we found some pretty interesting strategies, and I want to thank our special ed director of special, or student services, Lisa Orin, and Andy Johnson, our Director of Finance, for being really creative in how they approached this. And so some changes last year to the special ed funding formula allowed us to make some shifts between federal and state funding so that we can capitalize on the funding, on the funding allowance from the state. So we don't want to leave any money on the table. If we're eligible for funding, we should, we should go get all that money that's, that we're eligible for. So we were able to find some just by shifting how we code expenditures between federal and state, make sure we capitalize on both the federal and the state funding. That comes to an increase of $775,000, $600,000 in that, in that shift, but also on third-party billing. So we have students on medical assistance for whom we provide some medical services. We can bill the Department of Human Services for any medical services that we provide students on medical assistance. That's called third-party billing. And we found some, we're working with somebody who specializes in this area, who's helping us identify expenditures that we haven't been billing to Department of Human Services that we can start billing. We think that number of $175,000 is going to grow over time, and so we look forward to learning more about how to, how to better claim those, those expenditures. Second one, staffing adjustments based on projected enrollment and department review. So these staffing reductions are aligned, are aligned to our enrollment trends, but our goal is to maintain our aggregate staffing levels from the past three years. So when we look at what our, our planning was for staffing each of the past three years, especially this past year because of the pandemic, we're significantly above that. And so we're, we've identified staffing with our principles, and we're working to get staffing in line with what our plans were, and what our ratios have been over the past three years. That also includes some retirement savings from teachers who retire, recognizing that there might be areas also where we have increases, increased staffing, and areas where we might have decreased. When we register students at the secondary level, our staffing is, responds to that course selection that students choose. If more stu, significantly more students choose science electives in a particular year, we'll have more science staffing. If the next year they choose less science courses, we might have less staffing that year. So our staffing at the secondary level is responding to our course selection of our Supply budget reductions of $120,000, that's a 15% reduction in supply budgets across the district, and we think we can do that. Software, technology, equipment, and contracted service reductions. So we're looking at, at, where do we have redundancy in the software subscriptions that we have? As times got on, we have, never seen that one. So as time goes on, we've, we've had more and more software subscriptions, and we find areas where we have redundancy. And so we took this opportunity to really dig into it, and our teaching and learning team, along with our, our technology team, is looking for areas of redundancy, and are targeting $60,000 in savings in software subscriptions. We're also extending the computer replacement cycle for our desktop computers from five to six years, because we've become more and more cloud-based, the drain on our computers is just less, and we can get more time out of it. So once, once upon a time, we had a four-year replacement cycle, now we're at five, and we think we can get to six years on our desktop computers. Contracted service reductions, we own a fair amount of fiber optic cable that runs throughout our community and connects our schools, and we've had some, we have a fiber optic maintenance agreement that we're, we're going to be getting rid of, and so we think we'll be okay there, and that's going to save us in the neighborhood of $35,000. Staffing shift from general fund assigned to general fund restricted sources of $760,000, and this is a significant number. And as we, and I really want to credit Andy Johnson, our Director of Finance, for coming in with a fresh lens on how we've coded some of our, some of our salaries from general fund versus operating capital. And so we're able to move some of those salaries out of the general fund into operating capital. As well, we have some building engineers that we'd move from our general fund to our pay-as-you-go LTFM budget. And again, that's just standard, very normal coding of these positions, but it can save us a significant amount of money. The final one on here is the proposed school start time and dismissal time change will yield the transportation savings of $600,000 if we go ahead with that. So the total adjustments that we've identified are $4,264,685. It's a significant amount. It's slightly higher than what we had targeted. We targeted $4 million. We think we can get to this number, and recognizing that all of these are projections, none of those numbers are perfect, at this point, we're projecting this budget. And so being slightly over that is not a bad thing, and if we realize that all $4.2 plus million dollars, that'll be funds that we won't need to adjust moving forward with fiscal year '23. We had some good news from the state this week, and the February 26 budget projections were significantly better than expected, still not quite where they, where the pre-pandemic projections were, but significantly better than what they were telling us in December. So knock on wood, we're hoping that that comes with some increased funding. Our budget for next year does not include increased funding from the state, and we think that was a responsible decision, so hopefully we will come in with a little bit better than nothing. So moving forward, I've shared this timeline with you quite a few times now, and we just continue to move through this timeline. We're presenting the preliminary budget adjustments to the board tonight, and at our March 22 meeting, we'll ask you to approve these adjustments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wal. I will open it up to questions from board members. See, Ms. Ellison has her hand up, so please.
Mr. Wal, I have two questions. One, could you clarify the, the news from the legislature? Does that have to do with enrollment numbers, or why is the projection looking better than we had just heard?
Now, part of it is that, that the number of students that the state is serving right now is down, and so that had an impact on the budget projection.
Okay.
So next year, hopefully, you know, we'll see some of our enrollment recover, and I suspect schools across the state will see some of their enrollment recover as well.
But we won't find out about potential increases or flatlining until the omnibus budget bills come out later in the session, right?
True, true, and that's one of the challenges school districts have when they build their budgets, is they don't know the work that the legislature's going to accomplish. And so as the legislature continues to work, typically it's April, May before we get those numbers, and it seems every year they're surprised that they're talking about having a special session at the end.
And then the other question I have is about the timeline. So the, the last item on the list was the proposed schedule change. And so does that mean that, as we're looking toward the March 22 meeting, that we would then, in order to, in order to approve this budget, need to also be approving the schedule change?
No, not necessarily. Dr. Kazmercek might want to comment.
We're planning to, early April, to bring that, that to the board for action. So we would be, you'd be approving the budget adjustments, but we would, we would word it in a way so that that, that next decision would be coming in early April around school start times.
So they would be two separate?
Yep. We would actually take action on that separately.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Are there questions, comments? Mr. Chapman.
Yeah, Mr. Wal, I know there's been some talk or discussion about whether or not there would be early retirement incentive. Could you just update us on where that sits?
Sure. Yep. We do have a, a plan with our Teachers Association. I mentioned earlier that when teachers retire, you can get a significant savings because, because they have a long schedule, and, and many of our retiring teachers are at the very top of that schedule. But every year, we have some teachers retire, and so in really, in order to capitalize on that as a budget savings, we need more teachers than normal to choose retirement. And so we have an opportunity through our OPEB, which is a post-employment benefit fund. It's funds that cannot be used in the general fund, only for post-employment benefits that we can access. And so we have an incentive for our teachers who choose to retire early, that they can have funds in, put into their HRA to help pay with post-employment health insurance premiums. So right now, teachers have, until I believe it's March 15th, to opt in for that retirement. And if we, there's a threshold of, I believe it's 20 teachers, that we would need to opt in before it would make sense for us to move forward with that.
And then will that be at the March 22 budget adjustment approval meeting, which is our work-study meeting? That will be laid out more in detail as to what that all is going to involve, or between now and then?
Yeah, so at our March 22 board meeting, our HR Director, Matt Mons, will be bringing forward the staffing scenarios, and that'll be laid out in that.
Okay, okay. And then I've got one, one other. The other question I have has to do with the fiber optics contract that you said that we have. Could you expand on that? I just, I realize in the whole scheme of things, we're not talking a lot of money there, but I also want to make sure that we don't leave the district in a, in a bad situation by giving up the contract and having something go down, and we are at the mercy of, you know, you know, where our facilities go down as far as being able to teach and so forth, so.
Yep, yep, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Steve Asper, our Director of Technology, to address that. He and his team have been working on that and came up with that recommendation. Steve?
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. The, the contract that we're talking about is actually just a, a changing vendor of contracts. So by doing that, it's allowing us to take advantage of some other E-rate, federal E-rate funding. So it, it's going to reduce our costs a little bit, but then with that E-rate funding, it'll, it'll cut it down even more. So that's, that's really the clarification there. It has to do with just switching contract vendors.
Okay, so we will have somebody there in case there's an issue?
Yeah, we'll have coverage, yep. And, and really what that fiber maintenance is, it locates when people call for service to locate services in the ground because of construction or digging. It's those services that go out and do that and it's covering those costs. And then any maintenance costs that would be happen if something were to be, a line was to be severed or something like that. Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Newmaster?
I had one more question, I think, that was covered a little bit in our work-study in February when we talked about the possible savings different places. So I'm just wondering, there was the 600,000, I think it was $600,000 savings with X number of buses not being needed if the time changes for school start and end.
Yep.
Was that ever looked in different sections or is that only as a whole? That the whole package as it's presented is accepted and there's no other options? So let's say you have a whole lot of elementary students that would hope that they could start a little bit later.
Oh, I see.
I'm just, I'm just wondering.
So the tiers of that transportation system on the proposed start time, could you pick parts of it but not all of it?
Yeah, and I realize it's super complex with things you don't know, but I just wondered.
Yeah, I think the, the, the tiers require that you have enough time to do all your transportation. And so we have that as compressed as we possibly could. From our elementary start time at 7:45 to our middle school dismissal at 4:00 PM. So we, we try, that was our goal with this, was compress that as much as you possibly can. And, and so I don't think, I think the answer is no to that. Dr. Kasmercheck has been studying that too. He might have more to add.
Yeah, I think anytime you move those times closer together or if you shift one of them, say 10 or 15 minutes, the whole, the whole works needs to shift unless you put more buses into the system.
Right.
So that's, that's the balance.
Which would reduce the savings, but I guess I was asking, if something happened that changed it a little bit, would the whole thing crash and burn? Or would it be a matter of adding three more buses and not saving as much?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it would crash and burn, but I would say that it would be, yeah, we just have to figure, what is that sweet spot of, if we can realize some significant savings, we should, we should attempt to do that, but balancing all of the other, other factors as well. And there are a lot of other factors to balance. And you asked how many different scenarios. I mean, Mike Tredor, Transportation Director, has been working on this for probably, quite honestly, probably about five years he's been running different scenarios. And so there's, you know, it's probably countless the number of very, you know, different scenarios we've, we've tried, but, yeah. But no, it's a good question because we could, you know, you could add 20 buses to the mix and increase your cost.
I'm not saying that.
No, I know, I'm just, I'm saying that there's, that's one variable. You can try to run as efficient as possible or, you know, or you can add more buses into the mix, it just becomes more expensive.
Well, I understand some of the big variables are traffic patterns and then you've got the research for the high schools that we've always been hoping that they could start later.
Yep.
And I'm just wondering about the other end with our littles. Just wondering how that hits the budget and the plan.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Newmaster. Are there questions, comments? I just want to also say thank you very much for your work on this. I know it's a complicated process to go through the budget and I want to thank you and the whole team to bring the information in and kind of seeing it kind of put together. So I really appreciate your work.
Appreciate that. And criticals to principals who dug in, gave us a lot of feedback, our entire staff, teachers and all the support staff who dug in. But I want to give a lot of credit to Andy Johnson, our Director of Finance, who really had the spreadsheets working throughout this process. He's an outstanding addition to our school district.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you very much, Mr. Walt. If there's no other questions, we will now move on to our first reading of board policies. If you're not familiar how this process works, the policy committee updates the policies on a frequent basis. They then come before the board for two consecutive readings. The first reading is to be able to answer questions and have comments about the policies. And then the second reading is to pass them. We have two board members, Vice Chair Chapman and Clerk Ellison that sit on the policy committee. Always thank them for their work because it's a, it's a long, drawn-out process. So this, this month we have several policies. Policy 417, chemical use and abuse. Policy 522, student sex nondiscrimination. Policy 901, community education. Policy 903, visitors to school district property and facilities. And Policy 905, advertising. Policy 906, community, community notification of predatory offenders. And Policy 910, awarding an honorary diploma. Are there any questions regarding those policies? Dr. Newmaster?
I have, and I can give you the policy on the page if that helps.
I think that would be great.
Some of it, I mean, it's, it's a ton of work that you guys have done and the changes look great. I just had a couple of things that kind of struck me in, in this policy and one other one that I wondered if the language maybe should be brought up to this century and decade a little bit more. That would be, Policy 903 was the first one I wrote down a question about, I think that's page 93?
93. Why don't you wait one second and let everyone get there, Dr. Newmaster?
Board packet, page 93?
93.
Okay.
Just going back there to.
This was Policy 903?
903.
What section?
Um, page 93, 903, did I write the section down?
Or if you just tell us where it's at, where you're reading?
Just looking for, where's page 93 here? Beginning of it. It was something about contacting slash phone calls to speak with a student or text a student. Oh, it was parents wanting to call their student during the school day. And I just wondered if that could be tweaked a little bit to reflect the fact that was kind of in the day when, if people wanted to contact their kid, they had to call the office. And now we know probably what, 90% of our kids are here with a cell phone? So I just wondered if something in there should reflect the fact that, or if you just wanted to say, I said, should this have a sentence regarding cell calls from parents to kids during the school day? Because that's one realistic way. I mean, they were struggling with, with that when I was up at North. Then it was like, if your parents want to call you, they should call you between classes or leave a text. And I don't know what they've done since then. But this seemed like it didn't mention the fact that kids had phones at all. It just talked about if a parent wants to contact their student and leave a message during the day, they can do this. And I wondered if we should have a sentence in there regarding cell calls. And that was on page 93 that they talked about that.
Dr. Kasmercheck, do you want to take a stab at that or is there someone else that would be better suited?
Yeah, it was Part C, Parent Procedures for Communicating with Children. And then one, Parents May Call the Office to Speak With, and Ask to Speak With Their Child. And I just think that's kind of unreal in this day and age.
Well, I think what's written is still, I think it's still valid. I think we probably still do have parents who reach out to the office. Are you asking to add like another category under C that talks about cell phones?
I, I didn't know. It just talks about, Parents May Call the Office and Ask to Speak With Their Child. School staff will then locate the child and instruct the child to come to the office to speak with their parent by telephone. I mean, that just sounded like something out of the 70s. And that's one way to reach a kid that doesn't have a phone or that they're, maybe now all of a sudden everyone turns their phones off all day. I don't know. They didn't five years ago when I was up at school. But I just thought there should be.
Yeah, I'm not sure how we build something regarding cell phones and, and, I'm not sure how we build something regarding parents communicating with their children via cellphone in a policy and, and at this point. I'm not, I, I get that that's what happens. I'm not sure how we build that into the portion.
I didn't know. It read, I read that and I thought, boy, that sounds like we ought to have something that kind of brings it up to.
Dr. Newmaster, I can talk about how it plays out in practice. We do have parents, you know, we think of younger kids or students who don't have cell phones. We do have parents definitely who call the office. In practice, we absolutely try to teach students responsible use with their cell phones. So we have parents who reach out to their students. We talk a lot with our secondary administrators. How do we help students say, excuse me, this is an emergency? You know, it's not as much as it used to be at first where we're like, you absolutely can't talk on the phone, but trying to figure out that middle ground because everyone eventually possibly will be using cell phones. But we also, there is a balance with younger, you know, middle school and high school kids and trying to help separate that technology as well, especially that cell phone. And so in practice, we absolutely work through that. It is hard to put all those nuances in a policy. And so I would say the policy meets the needs that we have in terms of the building and then how we talk about it with school handbooks and working through administrators and how that plays out in practice, we, we account for those nuances that you're talking about.
I just, I just wondered, and I wasn't implying that this should be changed, I just wondered if we should put another sentence in there that says, it is possible that. But if you were handling it still with the handbook and the kids read it and share it with their parents, maybe that does it. It just kind of clinked when I read it and I thought, boy, that sounds like 20 years ago.
In terms of administrators, this policy meets our needs. If the board would feel like they wanted something in there, that would be up to the board, but we absolutely are navigating that.
And this doesn't mean that a student who had an emergency at home couldn't get a text and check it between hours. You do talk about that.
Yep, absolutely, we do.
And we did in the past. So it's not like they would be punished.
No.
Okay.
Dr. Newmaster, before you continue, I think Ms. Ellison had a comment and I just want to make sure I give her the time to make her comment.
Yeah, I was just going to reflect similar to what Dr. Gillespie said, that one thing I've learned from being on the policy committee is the use of the word "may" is really important there. And students generally will not be permitted. And so I would say that from a policy committee standpoint, this covers the ground. So I, I would, I'm just agreeing with Dr. Gillespie that, that we've, I think we've learned that we don't need to put in all of the scenarios, it just needs to cover our bases. So I would, I would say that we're probably good, but I appreciate your, your input.
I guess I just want to know how the nuance of more direct with older students. So as long as the, the handbook still exists and is discussed, that works.
Absolutely, it is.
Okay.
Thank you. And then did you have another question?
I did. Page 160, Section 5 of Policy 220, or 524. So Policy 524, page 160, Section 5.
That's the.
Use of electronic.
Dr. Newmaster, so when we get down to the next one, that's, that's under the operational items? So can we just put that, when we get down to that one, then you can ask your question? And then that way that'd give the staff time to get down there and read the section? Because that's under the operational items.
The one we've heard before. And the other one's probably on the same, same.
What's the policy number on the last one that you have?
At the beginning, page 167.
Down there?
Yeah.
Okay. So when we get down to those operational items and you will, well, I'll give you a second, you can bring up your question.
Okay.
Are there any other questions regarding the policies coming up for their first reading? Hearing or seeing none, then they will then come back to the board next month for our, for their second reading and we will move into our first operational item, which is E1, which is the action on the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Resolution of Concurrents. Is this Dr. Davis? Are you going to bring it up for concurrence? It's all, all you, all you need to do is just give us the resolved action and, and we'll, I'll take it from there. How's that?
All right, sounds good. The White Bear Lake Area Schools, American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, voted yes for the concurrence for the year of 2021.
So we have a recommended action before us, which is the acceptance of the resolution. Vote of concurrence as recommended by the AI PAC, right?
Yep, American Indian Parent Advisory Committee.
Okay, we have before us a recommended action. Is there a motion to approve the recommended action?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Chapman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Arcan. Is there any discussion regarding the recommended action? Hearing or seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the recommended action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The action is approved. Thank you very much, Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Chairman.
We will now move into our next operational item, E2, which is the action on the 2022, 2023 school year calendar. Dr. Gillespie?
Chairman, members of the board, earlier tonight, I brought the 2022, 23 school calendar before you. I would like to extend my thanks to the committee for their great work on getting this done in one meeting, record time. And so if you could please, my recommended action is to approve that along with the resolution that we read each year.
Thank you very much. I know that there is a resolution that needs to be read for the record, so I would ask the clerk to please read the resolution and then I will ask for a motion to accept the resolution and, and approve the recommended action.
Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 624, that the attached school year calendar be approved and adopted for the 2022, 2023. And that pursuant to Minnesota Statute 645.44 subdivision 5, the School Board of Independent School District 624 has determined that Indigenous Peoples' Day is not a legal holiday and therefore public business, including school board and informational meetings, may be transacted on that day. Additionally, schools will be open on Veterans Day and in accordance with state statute, will have at least one hour of activities in observance of Veterans Day.
You've heard the resolution and the recommended action. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Arcan. Is there a second by Dr. Newmaster?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion regarding the recommended action or the resolution? Hearing or seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The ayes have it and the motion is adopted. Thank you, Dr. Gillespie. We now have before us our final, our second reading on, on several school board policies. We're going to take them in one fell swoop and work them back through. I, what I will do is acknowledge the policies. I will then ask for a motion for their second reading and a second, and then open it up for discussion. I know there's going to be some. So with that, for policies 408, policies 413, policy 414, policy 415, policy 419, policy 524, policy 806 and 809, is there a motion to adopt these policies for their second reading?
So moved.
There's been a motion by Ms. Ellison. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Arcan. Any discussion regarding those policies? Dr. Newmaster?
Oh, I just had one question on policy 524. That's page 160.
160, can you give us a second, let everybody get there? 160, can you give us a second, let everybody get there? Okay, policy 524, page 160, what section, please?
Uh, Section 5.
Section 5?
Yep, let's see.
Use of the district electronic technology and the Internet is a privilege, that section?
Right.
And your question?
Well, the use of the district and the Internet is a privilege and not a right, and I'm wondering if all students should have the right to access adequate tech and Internet since we, it's so critical to a lot of the learning these days. So if, I mean, yes, they have to use it appropriately, but I would hope that everybody has a right to a decent Wi-Fi, for example, and we've done our best to do that, I think. But I, and we don't want kids to abuse it, but if you say, it's a privilege, not a right, that would be like saying, it's a privilege to have a textbook or science equipment, it's not a right. And I say, all of our kids have a right to adequate tech and Internet access, as well as other things that they use in their classroom and for their schooling. So I, I just was thinking how it could be misused if you say, it's a privilege, not a right. So I...
Dr. Newmaster, I, just out of a discussion piece, I think that we want to have it be a privilege, because we want to be able to set some parameters around the Internet and how it's used in the school district, and by saying it's a privilege actually gives us the right to do that. So I think that leaving it that way would be a, in my opinion, this is just my opinion, leaving it like that would be beneficial to the district as a whole. If someone else would like to comment about that, I would definitely...
I'd just like to apply that, if, if you said then, attending school is a privilege, not a right.
I think they're on two different fields of play.
Well, it just hit me that it could be misused.
I think we'd run into legal issues if we said it was a right. I don't, I don't, I don't think we would want to do that. I think this has been put together by Minnesota School Boards Association, it's been reviewed by their attorneys. I don't think we'd want to call something a right. I, I get what you're saying.
Mm-hmm.
And absolutely want to have access, but there are certain limits that we need to place on systems, and we, we would not be able to operate, we would not be able to abide by that policy and operate, assuming it was simply a right. I think we're getting in the legalese, and if Mr. Mons was here, he'd be much more eloquent than I would, than I am right now, trust me. But I think it would be problematic to change it to, that it's a right versus a privilege.
Mr. Chapman?
Yeah, I, I agree with, with Chair Mullin and with, with Dr. Kazmichek. I can see, I certainly agree, you know, that there, there needs to be that access there as much as possible. I mean, we don't want to, you know, unnecessarily or whatever, limit the access, but, but at the same time, if somebody is abusing that, and we call it a right, then I think we're going to, that, the rest of that paragraph, the bottom part of that paragraph, talking about, you know, consequences, suspension or cancellation of privileges, payment of damages, so on and so forth, kind of out the window at that point, and I'm not sure we want to go quite that far if we encounter abusive situations. But again, that's my opinion, too.
Well, I'm not saying that that, you want to leave it open for that. I just wouldn't want there to be a loophole that we don't have the duty to provide for the kids the ability to access it. They, they need to use it responsibly, and their parents are responsible for that, too. But I would, I just didn't want to leave a loophole, so that we could do lots of distance things, and we would have some marginalized kids that couldn't afford it, and I don't, we haven't done that. I mean, we've done our best to provide tech and hotspots and things like that. But that was the only part. Again, I'm a little picky about things sometimes, but I keep thinking, can we have a way to know that there's full access for kids? They need to use it responsibly, just like you need to behave responsibly in a classroom, so you don't disturb other people's learning or whatever. But we still say kids, every kid has a right to an adequate education right now, and they're debating that wording, so, just wondered.
Thank you, Dr. Newmaster. Any other questions or comments regarding policies that are up for their second reading? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor of adopting the policies, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the policies are adopted. Now, it's time for one of my favorite times, which is board forum, and then to give board members the ability to speak about whatever they would like. I'm going to start it off this evening, and I'm just going to thank everyone for their patience, not being together for a long time, and it seems like a year, and I know we've seen each other since then, but it seems like it's been about a year since we've been in this room, understanding the new environment that we're in, understanding all the protocols and all the things that need to go around that. I want to thank the staff, thank them for their work to make sure that people are, feel comfortable in this setting. Thank my colleagues on the board for, for your work around and your patience around making sure that everything is, is working. I know it was a little slow go tonight, and I think that as we get back to more in-person meetings, the energy and the livelihood will then pick up, and maybe one day we will even have, be able to not wear masks if the world changes. So I just want to thank everybody for, for all those things, and I'm just going to tell you that, on a little point of personal privilege, today I watched the news like I do every morning, and as the weather came on, and I seen that we are going to be in the 40s this week, in the 50s by next weekend, I just seemed to have a little bit bigger of a smile. So I would encourage all of you to think along those lines and know that we will all be warmer at some point, hopefully this week. So with that, I will open it up to anybody else, that has anybody, anything else for board forum. Dr. Newmaster?
I just want to say, huzzah, we're back. I see most of your faces right now, and, you know, at some point in the near future, we may see an entire smile. You're probably smiling behind that mask, but it's hard to tell, now we look for eye crinkles. But I congratulate all the staff and students and parents that have undergone this tumultuous year and the anticipation of our middle and high schoolers to be back. I heard someone who will be nameless talking about prom. So it's, it's, it's a good thing that we're looking at that, and everyone has persevered and been resilient, as well as up and down and every place in between. So thank you to everybody, all the teams that have worked so hard. Allison, you know, who's been out there trying to pull together each, each thing, and it all represents a ton of work, so thank you to everybody out there. And how do we say thank you for the new student recognition style that's put together? I think all the grandmas can look it up online and see it, and that's a good thing. They don't get their cookie, but it was very nice, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Newmaster. Any other comments? Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Chair Mullin, I move to adjourn.
I will second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned.